Hey, I have six o'clock, so we're ready to go.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, for those of you that are on mute, stay on mute, but I will call a roll call in a minute with our Madam City Clerk. So, good evening, everyone. Welcome. It's Monday, April 11th, 2022. We are going to start our regular meeting of the Lomita Planning Commission at six o'clock. And Madam Clerk, if you would do a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair Camerata. Commissioner Dever is just joining us now, so we'll get back to her. Commissioner Santos?
I'm here.
Commissioner Steinbach? We're noting his, sorry?
I believe Bob said he might miss this meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
President.
Vice Chair Graff?
Here.
And Chair Camerata?
Here.
Commissioner Dever, you with us?
Yes, here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. And as I mentioned, I thought Commissioner Steinbach said he might miss tonight's meeting, but I'm not 100% certain. Okay. So, moving forward, item number two, oral communications. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on subjects other than those that are included on the agenda are requested to do so at this time. Please provide your name and address for the record in order to conduct a timely meeting. A five-minute limit per person has been established. Madam Clerk, have you received any comments or speaker cards, I guess, if you would, regarding any items not on tonight's agenda?
I have not.
Okay. And if there is anyone on the meeting wishing to speak, you may do so now. If not, we will move forward. And from what I can see, I see no one has raised their hand, so we'll move forward. Okay. Item three, consent agenda. We are going to do item three A, which is the approval of the March 14th, 2022 minutes. And I would like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda minutes, please.
Make a motion.
There are too many of us. A motion to approve the March 14th minutes of the Mini Plan Commission.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you, Joaquin. Madam Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote on that, please?
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
Noting the absence of Commissioner Steinbach. Commissioner Stevens?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
And Chair Camerata?
Yes. Okay, so.
Sorry, that's, sorry, I apologize. That's six zero through.
Yeah, as I say, they passed six to zero. Okay. Public hearings. We have two items, item number four and item number five. And before we get started, I'm going to recuse myself from public hearing number four, and I will let my Vice Chair Graff take the meeting for this particular item.
Thank you. Pardon, pardon, Vice Chair. I just wanted to be sure of the somewhat recent, is that a FPPC, Political Reform Act, financial conflict of interest?
Well, let me explain for everybody on the meeting very quickly. So, the applicant happens to be Luigi Sciapa. He is our client. And when they went before the commission to approve, get approval for the apartment mixed-use building, I recuse myself because part B of that development was the condominium project that was going to be on the back half of that. And that's what we do. We manage condominiums. And so, as a client of ours, I recuse myself from that entire vote. Now, this is not directly linked to making or, you know, any, there's no, there's no monetary exchange of anything for this particular item, but just to make sure that everybody's clear on it, I would just assume recuse myself just so that nobody can say anything going forward. That's all.
Perfect, Chair. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, Patrick. So, with that, Linda, if you can put me into the chat room or the waiting.
Okay. One moment, please.
Okay.
All right. So, I've put Steve in the waiting room, and unless I put Bill in the waiting room.
I was gonna say, we still see Steve.
All right, just a moment. Steve.
See, that's really tricky.
It is. Well, it is, because I'm clicking and then it moves. Okay, this should work. Steve is gone. Mr. Lockwood's back. Mike, Vice Chair Graff, I just forwarded you the script, if you need it, via email, but probably you won't need it.
I got it.
All right, great.
All right. Excuse me. We'll now begin the public hearing on item number four, alley vacation. That kind of seems strange name, but anyway, alley vacation. A request to vacate approximately 2,850 square feet of the public alley located adjacent south to the property at 24516 Narbonne Avenue. The request would formally convert this portion of the alley into a publicly accessible for sale. The summer, summary vacation is categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA guideline, section 15305, minor alterations and land use limitations. Do we have a staff report, please?
Our Assistant Planner will be presenting this report.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, I will be presenting a request for a vacation of a portion of public right-of-way. Next slide, next slide. Thank you. The portion of public right-of-way is located south of 24516 Narbonne Avenue. The nearest major intersection is Narbonne Avenue and Lomita Boulevard. The site is zoned downtown commercial with mixed-use overlay and has a general plan designation of mixed-use overlay. Highlighting in yellow is the portion of the public right-of-way proposed to be vacated, which is approximately 15 feet in width and 190 feet in length, and measures approximately 2,850 square feet. On August 4th, 2020, City Council approved a modification to Conditional Use Permit Number 294, investing tentative track map number 74138 for Phase Two of a two-phase mixed-use project consisting of 16 new residential units and associated parking. Phase one of the project comprised of 3,700 square feet of ground floor commercial space and five residential units and associated parking. Construction for Phase One was completed in 2018, and the ground floor is currently occupied by Burning Daylight Brewery. As part of the Phase Two portion of the project, the applicant proposed to purchase a portion of the public right-of-way to create a public for sale connecting the commercial portion of the project fronting Narbonne Avenue with the Phase Two residential units in the rear. As a condition of approval, City Council required a purchase and sale agreement, as well as other conditions, to pursue the proposed vacation and to ensure a formal conversion to private property. On December 22nd, 2021, City Council declared its intent to vacate the subject site and directed the Planning Commission to conduct a hearing on the matter, and that's why we're here tonight. The previous slide, please. Thank you. This is a rendering of the proposed public for sale. The applicant is proposing to incorporate elements such as movable tables and chairs to accommodate additional seating for the public, as well as decorative street lighting. Greenery in the form of a planter area and landscaping is also proposed. The improvements will be a step towards creating a downtown that promotes pedestrian activity. The request will accommodate improvements designed to ensure trash and service trucks maintain maneuverability and can still perform necessary functions. The existing curb-cut driveway apron along Narbonne Avenue is proposed to remain. The applicant intends to install removable pipe bollards in the, as a form of guiding traffic and protecting pedestrians from vehicular traffic. If interested, the Planning Commission may suggest alternative design options. As a part of a condition of approval, the applicant is required to record an access and maintenance easement, allowing public access to the for sale and ensuring the, ensuring the maintenance is performed by private ownership in perpetuity. Before the City Council can make the final decision and either deny or approve a vacation request, the Planning Commission shall determine if the proposed vacation of the public right-of-way is consistent with the general plan. If the Planning Commission makes this finding, then a public hearing before the City Council will be scheduled to vacate the public right-of-way. Pursuant to Government Code Section 6465402 and Streets and Highway Section 8313, the vacation complies with the general plan land use element in the following ways. It promotes improvement of aesthetic and visual qualities of the community by landscaping and beautifying the streets and highways and implementing development standards for private improvements, as well as striving to develop a pedestrian downtown that is economically viable and promotes a wide range of activities. The alley vacation in conjunction with Conditional Use Permit 294 and Track Map Number 74138 ensures residential development and active uses in the downtown commercial zoning district. The vacation is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3, as the activity is covered by the general rule that CEQA applies only to projects that have the potential for causing significant effect on the environment. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission make the appropriate findings and recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the vacation of approximately 2,850 square feet of public right-of-way located itself of 24516 Narbonne Avenue and corresponding CEQA categorical exemption. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, thank you. Excuse me. Are, do any Commissioners have any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Dever?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Santos?
I do not. Thank you.
Commissioner Stevens?
I do have one. I'm assuming that since you're taking that alley access away from the other businesses along that face Lomita Boulevard, that they're on board with that, and that's all pathetic. Seem to well be able to exit with, like, the bank and still got to exit through that back out onto Narbonne or on to down going towards 245.
Yeah, they've been notified.
Okay, that was my only concern.
I think also to clarify, if you look at the site plan, there is circulation that is still provided for, for the businesses that utilize the alley. And so, the only connection that really is closed off is that portion that is between the Credit Union Building and the, the mixed-use building. Otherwise, just behind that, where you have the parking lot for the brewery, as well as the parking lot for, I think it's for the the white building. Is that the one that has the, the gym and stuff in it? Those still have access to the alley.
Okay, because it looked from the, the picture there, it looked like it went beyond that. So, that was my only.
Right. So, Lemesis, you might want to go back to the site plan, just to make sure that that's clear.
Linda, could you go back to slide four? Thank you. So, the proposed vacation is highlighted in yellow.
Right.
So, it's not running the entire length of the alley.
That's right. But in terms of the actual area that is closed off for circulation, doesn't that end somewhere near where Lot 36 would be located? So that if you're driving the alley, you actually drive along a portion that is now privately owned, but you can turn into the parking lot where Burning Daylight is located, or you can turn the opposite way and go into the parking lot that is for the property that's facing onto Lomita.
Yeah, because the way I'm looking at this, it stops like behind the art studio, which takes up those two corner lots to the, the east. So, it looks like you could get there from that, but the yellow is what I'm assuming is going to be blocked off, correct?
Yeah. Linda, can you go to the next slide? Or one before. Can you go to slide seven?
I'm sorry, I just.
No, it's a good clarification. That's the one.
So, so the, the lines in red indicate the vehicular traffic.
Right. So, you can see that the vehicles are able to come from private property into the vacated portion of the alley. So, there will be a public access agreement still provided for. So, anyone who comes on to the parking lots are still able to access the, both the private and the public portion of the alley in order to exit.
Okay.
There, excuse me, there was one of the drawings that was provided in the package showed very clearly the parking lot of the Credit Union and the building adjacent, or not adjacent, the, the white building. And it showed the alley and it showed vehicles being able to access through there.
Okay, I, I'm missing that page then. So, but that's fine. As long as, my concern is the other businesses, we still have alley access rather than just going out onto Lomita Boulevard.
This.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair or Vice Chair. So, in the, the Planning Commission packet, there is a page that depicts exactly what Vice Chair Graff was indicating. And so, I'll hold it up, but if you look in your staff report, you can actually see this one, and it does show the maneuvering.
I don't have that page.
It should be in your staff, in your Planning Commission staff report. It's one of the attachments.
Yeah, I was just looking at that, but I, I don't have that particular page. It's okay, it's okay. I have clarification.
Page D.1.3.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. That was my only, that was my only question, I'm sorry. But I think you've answered it. As long as, you know, that's fine.
All right. So, just a question for Lemesis. So, just for clarification, in terms of where the bollards will be located, they are being proposed along the driveway approach adjacent to Narbonne. Are there also bollards that will be proposed in the alley so that cars will not be able to continue straight through?
Yes.
Okay. So, really, there is a kind of a cordoned-off section of the vacated alley that will be for seating, landscaping, and other types of improvements. The rest of it will still allow for the access of vehicles. And I think the only question that may come up for the Planning Commission is sometimes when you vacate an alley and you still have a driveway approach along the public street, in some cases, it may be prudent to remove that driveway, but that's up to the Planning Commission to determine. At this point, it is still proposed to remain. So, the bollards could be lifted up and something could drive through.
Okay, then, question, let me go to the commission before we go on. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I was having the same concern. I was comparing attachment four, which is page D.1.1 with the D.1.3, and the drawings are confusing to me, too. Even on D.1.1.3, that shows the parking lot with the Credit Union on the left and the still got a fitness on the right, it looks like the car is trying to exit into what is now the alley, which is the subject alley we're talking about. Certainly can't, would not be able to go left onto Narbonne, and it looks like they're, they may not be able to go right. I mean, I don't see the exit into the alley either way on, on either one of these drawings. Certainly, D.1.1, there's, looks like, doesn't show the, the parking lot exit at all. And D.1.3 shows cars, looks like cars going into what is now the alley, which is the part we're looking to vacate. Left-hand, left turn, they won't be able to go anymore. Right turn, I'm not sure, and that's my question, what is, what is right there where these cars are exiting the backside of the parking lot into what is the alley?
Commissioner Thompson, I believe those pictures or the vehicles that are there are depicting somebody backing out of those parking spaces. But that does bring up the question that Brenda brought up and you brought up also. What we need to ensure is that.
The bollards?
What?
Bollards?
Bollard? There should be some on the east side of that. There should be some. Anyway, there, you have them at the entrance to Narbonne, off of Narbonne. And there should be some on the at each side of the thoroughfare from the one parking lot into Burnin' Daylight's parking lot, so that nobody can make a turn on to the alley. Then there should be some in the alley at where the public alley ends. So, there should be four discreet sets of bollards so that vehicles cannot pass in those directions. Now, is that what is, is that what is provided for in the proposal?
There's currently only two sets.
Okay. Brenda? Uh, excuse me, Commissioner Stevens and Commissioner Thompson. If there's only two sets there, those are shown, as I see it, at the entrance at Narbonne and the east end of the the east end, or shoot, excuse me, the west side of the, where vehicles can go through the thoroughfare. They don't show, from what staff says, there are not bollards on the east side of the thoroughfare or at the west end of the actual public law, public alley. Is that correct, staff?
Yes, there's one set along Narbonne, and the other set is identified as item eight on the plan.
So, Lemesis, just to be clear, so when we're looking at D.1.3, the area that shows the enhanced pavement, which is the alley to be vacated. So, on the west side, which is adjacent to Narbonne, there are bollards. And then on the east side, there's three small dots. Those are also bollards?
Well, if that's the case, you wouldn't be able to make a right out of that parking lot either, according to this. Then I did find my paper. I apologize.
That's what I'm, that's my point.
Right.
That's my, my point is, no vehicle should be able to turn on the alley from those, from the thoroughfare from Burnin' Burning Daylight or the Credit Union parking lots. And then you should not be able to enter from the end of the public alley or from Narbonne. So, in my opinion, there should be four sets to make sure that vehicles cannot turn, enter that area whatsoever. Because if they can enter that area, what's, you know, you're going to have problems with pedestrians.
Right. As an alternative, if the bollards were placed somewhat adjacent to, I believe it's the trash enclosure, that would create an area that is between Narbonne and basically adjacent to where that first row of parking is. And so, that would become a protected area. So, you know, I was not involved with the, the discussions with the applicant on this, so I will defer to Lemesis. If there's a reason why we don't have access eastbound on the alley going to the public street.
That's my concern.
Well, the, the thing is, is from what I see, or maybe I don't see, because the, it's very difficult to understand. The, if you look at D.1, if you look at the red lines from the parking lot, it appears that you can go into the alley and exit going down toward Woodward.
Eastward, yeah.
I'm east, yeah, east toward Woodward. But yet, it shows it's part of the vacated alley. So, I'm very confused.
And then additionally.
Take, you're going to take the vacated alley and make it a vacated alley and not allow transportation other than the, the thoroughfare between the two parking lots. Or you're going to allow from the driveway east is, is, is also public alley.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
So, I think the, the problem that we have is that the two documents, the one that you see on the screen, which is part of the presentation versus D.1.3, show slightly different information.
Yes.
So, I think for clarification, I believe what Lemesis has on the screen is actually the site plan that's being subject to review and approval. And if so, that would provide the protected area just in the area that is adjacent to the Burning Daylight building. But the area that is to the east, where you see the lines, the red lines and the blue line showing circulation. Yeah. I believe that would still provide access over to Woodward. So, Lemesis, is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
Why is it being, why is it being vacated? It should stay public. It should still, still stay a public alley.
It will be still providing for public access because they will have an easement over the, the area. The pros and cons, you know, the, the pros is that the applicant is able to take ownership of the property. They are then responsible for the maintenance, providing insurance, providing the enhanced pavement materials, and any other items that may be part of their proposal. In terms of the, the cons, you know, the city no longer has direct responsibility, but that's actually a pro as well. Because we're still maintaining the access easement over the property, so the public still gets benefit of utilizing that area. They just don't have the access going directly to Narbonne.
Sure. If I, if I may, what you just said, and, and that's all fine and well, but should a car come out of that driveway and run over a pedestrian in that, in that green area to the east, which is drivable to the alley, who's responsible for that? Is that, is that the, the property owner, or is that the city?
It is not, it is not city property once the vacation takes place.
So.
Then there's, then there's going to be.
Property owner would.
Correct.
Would be totally responsible from Narbonne to Woodward.
Then there's going to be a court battle as to whether, whose property it, it happened on.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Well, the, the location of private property versus public property is pretty easy to define, because there will be property lines that will be able to be identified if there ever is a problem.
Are they going to paint them, are they going to paint them on, on the ground?
They don't need to, although I believe that they are looking to do an enhanced pavement material, so it'll be very clear what's public versus private.
It will be to those who know. It won't be to somebody that goes to court that's been hit by a car or a drunk driver going down, going down there from the, from from the brewery, going down to go, go down, go east on Wood, east down to Woodward.
Yeah, and so, and so, if I may interject here briefly, you know, tho- those concerns are all, you know, valid. That's, that's why you all are the city decision-makers in this instance. So, if, if, if those are kind of the, the concerns, what, what is before us today is, is whether or not this proposed, you know, alley vacation is consistent with the general plan. And so, if that's, if, if that's not something that this body kind of as a whole can, can get to, that is entirely fine. That is, that is in your kind of, you know, you know, that's, that's, that's the, the reason that you are all up here making that decision. The one thing that, that I would caution against is that we are now somewhat, you know, getting into the analysis and, you know, kind of getting into the nuances. Prior to that, it may be beneficial to solicit public comment first. If there's no more kind of factual questions about the alley, and then, of course, after public comment, we can kind of pick this up and, and you all can deliberate and, and determine what's kind of the best course of action, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Patrick. I think, are there any other questions on this particular matter before we go to the public hearing? We can revisit it after the public hearing.
Yeah, not at this time from Commissioner Thompson.
Brenda?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. We will now be, now begin the public comment portion of the hearing. Is the applicant present? And if so, would you like to make any comments? Uh, is the applicant present? And if so, would you like to make any comments? Public wishing to speak on this item.
I have not received any requests in writing.
And I don't see any hands being raised or anybody flagging here, okay? But you don't have, you don't have any inquiry, huh, Linda? Okay. And the applicant's not here, okay? So do any of the commissioners have any further questions? The, during the public comment portion before the public hearing is closed? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for further comments or, and so on and so forth.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I can make just a couple other comments just to help clarify.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, so the application that is before you is for the street vacation and is for the planning commission to make a finding of consistency with the general plan. And that's primarily related to traffic and circulation, but it also helps to identify the support that the alley provides in terms of the land uses that are adjacent. In terms of the staff's review of this application, we see this as being a benefit for the area because the applicant is taking a portion of the alley, which otherwise would just be kind of a plain black asphalt alley. And they're actually enhancing it so that it has more of a decorative nature. In terms of its serviceability, how it provides for traffic circulation in the area, the main areas that are of concern would be those properties that are currently accessing the alley, both for their parking lots, but also for trash, and then theoretically any other services that would be coming to the area. That is not really being changed, other than they will no longer have access off of Narbonne. They will still be able to come off of Woodward, they'll still be able to come off of the street that's to the north. Um, in terms of the, what the city would normally do, um, the city would not normally have the enhanced pavement because frankly, we don't want to pay for it, nor do we want to maintain it. So it is a benefit to the overall area if this area is aesthetically treated in a manner that creates something that's more interesting and more of an attraction for the commercial businesses in the area. So it's not uncommon for cities to have private developers take over responsibility of assets that are really kind of above and beyond what cities would normally provide for. And that's one of the reasons for this street vacation. Um, I believe that the applicant, you know, is trying to create a cohesive neighborhood, you know, where it feels better for not only the commercial businesses, but also the residential that's next door. Um, with the clarification that the alley plan that you see on your screen is the plan that's being proposed. So the bollards are along Narbonne and they're along the kind of a midsection about a third of the way through, so that there's a protective seating area, and the rest of it really does provide for walkability as well as vehicles that might need, might need to use the alley. Staff does believe that that meets the intent of the general plan, that the planning commission can make a finding in support of the project. Um, I think the only question that we have is whether or not the driveway that's along Narbonne, whether or not that should remain open just for the occasional use where it may be open for vehicles to come through. But that's not the applicant's intent, their intent is really to create a seating area that enhances the downtown area. So we still recommend the project as proposed, based on the design that you see on your screen.
And then Vice Chair, i- if I may to just speak briefly to that, um, you know, about legal liability out of a courtroom, they can come in and file a lawsuit against the city kind of anytime they want, but, but as, as staff, you know, stated beforehand, this, the proposal would, at least from where I sit, would reduce the city's liability, i.e. right now, if someone were to get hit in that alley, um, it is a, it is a, a, a public street. Um, so while of course there's many nuances and a million different legal arguments back and forth, um, you know, this, should it be vacated and become private property, um, it would, in theory, reduce the city's liability. Albeit, you're right, someone could still name us in a lawsuit and say, hey, you didn't do enough, or X, Y, and Z, whatever they want to posit. However, the fact that it is no longer public property, and it is now private property, at least where I sit, would be beneficial, at least as it pertains to that specific instance. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I appreciate what you're saying, maybe I went a little overboard when I was talking about life losses. I was primarily talking about the practicality of it. Okay, your lawsuit does play a point, uh, play a, a part, but I'm talking about the practicality of who's going to be driving in and out of there and so on and so forth. And, and people that are walking in there thinking it's a walkway and all of a sudden here comes a car, you know? Uh, I, I just, I think you either make it a public alley or you block it off, my opinion. So, are there, um, questions from any other of the commissioners? Commissioner Dever?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Santos?
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner Stevens?
Now, like I said, my only concern is if they block it off so they can still make a right turn out of those parking lots. And and then, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I think the whole concept is a great idea. I'm not, I'm not saying that, it was just my concern of the alley access by the other businesses at next door to the project. And, you know, and that was it. So you've answered all my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, I have a, a couple of concerns. First of all, giving up a public right of way, uh, public land. That's one. Uh, I understand that the legal consequence, hey, we give it up, we don't have the liability for it, or do we have the expense of maintaining it? Uh, and it will beautify the area. I see, I see the, the arguments in favor of it. The, the arguments against it would be, well, that's public land, that's, that's a, uh, an alleyway that's utilized by, by at least three or four businesses, and then people, uh, living north of, um, 245th Street, uh, and Woodward, a transition between, between Woodward and Narbonne through there. And it's, that'll definitely block off that access. But my, my overriding concern is the, is the, uh, the location of the bollards now, uh, the staff has said that they, the drawing D point 1.1 is the more accurate one, where the bollards are placed, uh, next to the trash, essentially, uh, adjacent just to the, the, the building. And so that there would be, uh, access from the southern parking lot utilized by the credit union and the, uh, still got fitness, and also from the north parking lot, which is the parking lot of the, of the brewery and the apartments upstairs. Um, and there's no, no bollards to the east of that, but the D point 1.3 shows bollards at, at each end of the, of the, um, alley vacation, which would block it off. So there's a conflict between the, the drawings as presented, and then moreover, my concern is the, the applicant's not here, who can clarify a lot of this stuff. So those are some serious concerns. One, the applicant not being here, the location is vague as to where the bollards are going to be. Uh, the, the access, the giving up of the public right of way, uh, that alleyway, and it will no longer be a throughway. And so it, it essentially, it'll only be used as, as an, if, if it can be used, as an exit from the two parking lots, and that's it. And, um, most importantly, I think the applicant not being here is kind of a big concern for me. So I have, I have real concerns about this, not only from a giving up public land right of way, and then we haven't, it's not our, our job to discuss the fair rent, fair market value of that land. Um, but I do, I do see the benefit, the beautification of the alley and a nice place to sit out there uh, behind the brewery and for the, for the residents to, uh, of the upstairs to come down, not into an alley, but into a, essentially a little park area where they're free to walk, they're not, and, and the safety issue is they're not concerned about getting hit by a car zooming through the alley. I understand that, that argument too. Me, I'm hesitant to, to vote yes on this at this time, uh, because it hasn't been, applicant's not here to, to explain uh, more. I think we have, we have to dig ourselves to find out the rationale for this thing. Those are my concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. So it, let me understand what the commission can do and cannot do on this issue. Can, they can either approve it the way it is or decline it the way it is? Can there be any conditions stipulated or added to uh, address the concerns of the, uh, the commissioners have? Counsel, can you answer that, please?
Yeah, sure. And so the, yeah, the, tonight, so the, the, the first two are, are accurate in a sense that it is a recommendation to the city council.
Yes.
Yes, no, 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 yes, I, I would think a condition as it applies only though to the, to the alley vacation, which, which from what I've heard tonight, that, that, that's been the kind of the subject and, 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 and kind of, you know, subject matter of, of everyone's discussions. Conditions on that to make that general plan finding consistency would be sufficient. However, what the planning commission would not be able to do is, is go outside of that and start making other conditions on the, on the project, if that makes sense. So if there's modifications to the bollards and things like that, that would be appropriate. Yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you. If we can reduce the city's liability and beautify that alley, like Mr. Thompson said, and provide seating for the community, I think it's a great plan to, uh, for this to go through. So I would, I would definitely support it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, Madam Deputy, or excuse me, first, uh, can we have a motion and a second, please?
I make a motion that, I, I make the motion that we accept staff's recommendation uh, to vacate the 2,850 square feet as suggested by, as recommended by staff.
Do we have a second? I guess we don't have a second. So what, what do we do now, counsel?
Sure, so that, that, that motion would, would fail for lack of a second. Um, now it is, it is up to the, to the planning commission to continue its, you know, discussions and, and analysis. That motion can be made again. Um, I probably wouldn't recommend making it right after, maybe there's some more discussions and some more, I don't want to say convincing, but more information gathering and questions asked. And then if not, um, you know, another motion could be made uh, to see if, if, if that garners a second, at which point the, the planning commission can continue its discussions and ultimately vote one way or the other, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with that and understanding that, um, are there any comments that could possibly be, uh, additional conditions of an approval? Are there, is anyone have any, any comments regarding, uh, what, uh, there could possibly be additional conditions that could be added to the recommendation? Or should there be another motion to not approve it?
Vice Chair, if I may, if we can, I make a motion that we, that we accept this proposal with the revision of very specific where the ballards are to be to allow exiting from the businesses going east on the alley. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Meaning, um, are you, you're talking about adding addition bollards?
Well, to make it very clear, because right here on, on the, the plan that's on the, the page, on the screen, there's three at Narbonne, which is kind of, that's set. The other three are by the trash can, which would allow entering and exiting both from 245th and Lomita Boulevard and those businesses onto the alleyway going east. They wouldn't, there's bollards where the trash cans are, they wouldn't be able to run over the pedestrians. And that's, I think, what we're all looking for. And that would be my motion to, to clarify that there needs to be access to the east for both the condos and the businesses.
I, I think, I think I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Stevens. So, uh, as I'm looking at this right now, uh, I just have another question for staff. Would it be possible for someone to turn west and park up against those bollards that are there now? Where they're located now?
So that, that area is not designated as a parking area. So we would assume that the applicant would, um, regulate how people utilize that area. If parking becomes a problem, they would have to place no parking signs, or they would have to show on their approved site plan that this is going to be used for parking. But at this point, they're not proposing that area for parking.
Okay, then why would it be possible to move the bollards as far east as possible to where you cannot make a turn and go into that? Meaning at the end, the east end of the trash cans or the trash that is shown there, I believe.
I understand the, the comment, uh, because if you look at D 1.3, which attempts to show the maneuvering, um, and as the vice chair correctly stated, this is actually showing the maneuvering for people who are backing out from the parking lot, being able to show that they need the area within the alley in order to be able to then go into a forward motion. So looking at the vehicle that's, that are supposedly backing out, it doesn't appear that they need as much of that alley area as would be suggested based on the bollard location that's shown on the screen. So the commission could include a condition of approval, asking the community development director to finalize a plan that would place the bollards and/or landscaping and other types of enhancements at the furthermost east location in order to enhance the, you know, the public seating area, and then still preserve the maneuvering for the both private and public alley.
Right, meaning, meaning the, the bollards could go to the, uh, the east end.
To the east.
To the e, go to the east end of the trash container, the trash area. Or, or whatever is the the farthest east that provides the required space for those cars to get out of those parking spaces.
For safe maneuvering.
For safe maneuvering, yeah.
Yes.
But not allow anybody to attempt to make a, a turn going west.
Correct. Now that, I think that's understood, and I think that's a, a good clarification.
Okay, um, counsel, Patrick, do you understand what is being said?
Absolutely, I do, and then I, I, I would just triple and double check with Commissioner Stevens to be sure that that was the thrust.
No, yeah.
Yeah, and point of her, of her motion.
But I mean, you, you can, you can give us some language that, that takes this idea and puts it into a condition for us.
Correct, yes, it would be, yes.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Stevens, does that address your concern?
Yes, because it allows for access from the condos as well as the businesses. But they can't run over where the tables are. That, that was my whole concern.
Sure, sure, understand.
So, Paige, if Miss Stevens, uh, sorry, Commissioner, uh, Mr. Chairman, if
Go ahead.
If Mrs. Stevens, uh, if that is her motion, then, uh, I will second it.
Okay, well, let's, let's wait, yeah, hold on just a second, Joaquin, please. Um, Commissioner Thompson? Uh, any, any, uh, comments with regard to what we've been just discussing?
Still have, still have concerns, is that they, I, I understand we're trying to clear up the, the conflict between the I I understand we're trying to clear up the the conflict between the drawings and the the not not being able to utilize that space. For parking. But still, the 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 exact location of the ballards and the drawings are are insufficient for me to make a decent decision. And then in the African not being here, I still have concerns. And if this time, I won't be able to support this.
No, I I understand, but that's why I asked. Counsel if they could put to if they could develop. A an an added condition. That would accurately. Reflect what we're talking about here to to prevent that situation. That's, and he said he could, so. Commissioner Dever, do you have any further comments?
No, no. I'm I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Add something?
Okay, go ahead.
Um, and the motivation to this entitlement, there is a condition that the ballards need to be installed at both entrances of the Paseo. To protect.
Yeah, but but they're not shown. What we're trying to do is. We're trying to further define the east end of the Paseo from what you're saying. The Paseo goes all the way down, theoretically goes all the way down to the end of or to where it turns into. The public alley. What we're talking about is the ballards here. Being positioned so that it will not allow. Any vehicles to make a a west turn west. In that area and only allow sufficient area for the. Safe maneuvering in and out of those parking spaces from the the two businesses on the or from the businesses. South of the alley.
Mr. Vice Chair, I think the the current location of the eastern ballards. Which would would cause a potential problem of parking in a right hand turn out of the. Northern parking lot. I think the reason why the ballots are there is to allow the trash truck access to the trash cans. Even at that, I think you have a hard time getting that getting at the trash cans. But if we move the ballards to the east, then they won't, there will be no access to the to the trash can. I think that's why they're there. So. Again, it's a it's a poor design, and it's not clear enough to me at this time, especially the the location of the eastern ballads, whether it'll be at the eastern edge. Of the vacation or in its current. Position, which will allow for parking, or if we move them to the east, so there could be no no westernly turn, then there'd be no access to the trash. I think that's.
Oh, we don't. Yeah. Do you know how those doors open and how the access to the trash is, though?
I do not.
Does does staff know?
No.
My guess, my guess is that they're gonna, they're gonna open to the north into the alley, so they can, you know, roll those trash bins out.
No, that would be, that would be south into the alley.
Well, I'm looking at the banks trash bins, which are to the south, yes. And I'm guessing those doors to the to the enclosure to the trash open into the alley. And if we were to move the ballards to the east, there'd be no access to those those trash. That's why the ballads are sitting right there.
Vice Chair, if I may, can we table this until they give us a specific, clear picture? Of where what is so that we know, so we're not second guessing. I think the concept is great. I'm just confused on on the availability. To the other businesses and even the people that are moving into the condo. You know.
Well, the people that are moving into those condos are throughout the other. I I understand, I understand what you're saying. Commissioner Stevens and Commissioner Thompson brings up a good point. With regard to trash access, and that may be why they're showing where they're at right now. But we don't know.
Vice Chairman Graff?
Yes.
Yeah, I just looked at Google Earth. So Commissioner is absolutely correct. Those trash closure doors do open up into the alley. So at this point, I think there's enough questions that have been raised this evening. Staff would recommend that you continue this public hearing to your next meeting. And we will sit down with the applicant and share with them some of the conversation we've had tonight. And see what they might propose in terms of alterations or at least additional information so that the Commission can make a decision.
Yeah, and yeah, and that that sounds good to me because. I I mean, I don't know whether or not the the trash bins that are burning daylight, they probably back right up to a parking spot there, too. Parking spots adjacent to that on the north side of that. So, yeah, maybe. Maybe we could continue it to another meeting. Let staff. Get with the developer and as far that goes. Check with the trash access for the credit union. Maybe take some pictures and have the applicant come and explain to us. And let's, you know, fix the location at the next meeting. For this. And and my suggestion would also be that. That we make it a point in the continuance that. The Commissioners. Save their packets so that staff doesn't have to reproduce the packets again. For the next meeting. And just whatever is applicable to the questions that have been brought up tonight. So that it minimizes their work and makes their job easier, too.
I agree.
So. If if everyone is leaning in agreement that way, can we have a motion to continue this to our next meeting? With staff having discussions with the, I guess, the two. The applicant as well as the the business on the south side. And maybe some pictures and everything, and then have the applicant come to the, you know, be present at the next meeting. To be able to explain it and go on, go on from there.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that item number four, the vacation, the portion of the public right away. Be tabled and put on the agenda for the next for May's. Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay. The only comment that I have there, I would like it to be noted that. What staff was is going to do. Not detailed, but the the overview and the fact that they don't have to reproduce these packages for this particular job again. Can we, can we do that, Counsel?
Absolutely. If that's the will of the of the Commission and everyone's in agreement that staff will not reproduce these, that's that's appropriate.
Okay, good, okay. Okay. Madam Deputy City Clerk, we have a. A motion and a second to continue this to our next meeting. Can you do roll call vote, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach is still absent. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
Okay, and Chair Camerata is recused from this item. So this item is, or I'm sorry, so the motion is approved five zero with one recusal and one absent.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, can you invite Chair Camerata back, please?
There, there he is. Hi, Chair Camerata, you back with us? Please unmute yourself, Chair Camerata.
Okay, we're back.
You're back. It's 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 in your lap, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Graff. Okay. So we are ready to go to. Public hearing. Item number five. Which is a site plan review number one, two, one, six. Request for a site plan review to convert sixteen hundred square feet of existing sixty eight hundred square foot warehouse into retail space and to allow for reduction. And the required parking by approving seven onsite parking spaces at a business located at. Five hundred feet of municipal, within five hundred feet of a municipal parking lot. As allowed by section eleven dash one dot forty nine dot oh six, sub paragraph D of the Lomita Municipal Code. For property located at two, four, four, zero, three, two. Two, four, four, one, three, Narbonne Avenue in the downtown commercial zone. And to confirm that it is categorically exempt. The applicant is a Mr. Bill Lockwood, and the presentation will be by Associate Planner Laura McLa- McMoran. Laura, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to note that. From the time this project was noticed, there was a small kind of insignificant change. And instead of proposing sixteen hundred square foot retail space, the applicant is now proposing eleven hundred and sixty square feet of retail space. And requesting a site plan that approves six parking spaces. Next, Linda, could you go to the next slide? We're here today because of kind of like somewhat technical sticking points, but that's the essence of planning. First. There is a change in occupancy. This space is currently used for storage and it is being converted into a retail space. Second is the site, as well as the use are nonconforming. And that has its own separate triggers. And then third, there is a need for a determination of similar, a determination of standards by the Planning Commission related to parking for. A use that does not have a parking standard mentioned in the code. Also, in conjunction, there will be minor alterations to the building's elevations. And as one of the findings, the first finding, compliance with Title eleven will be showing that to the Planning Commission. May I have the next slide? So this is property, we should be familiar, is Lomita Feed. It is very close to City Hall, and it is in the downtown commercial. Zone. Feeding grain sales while is a listed use in the municipal code, it is not listed in the DC zone and therefore is deemed nonconforming. Retail sales, however, is a permitted use by right. And this project is also consistent with the general plan. There is no new construction. It's FAR is well below the standard at point five. Next slide, please. So Lomita Feed is a mid-block site. It's approximately twenty thousand square feet. The. Parkway and sidewalk have a light pole and a utility pole. That in some ways determine where the driveway aprons are. The site has, the retail store is street facing on the north. End of the property behind it is a former residence that is now used for storage. And then to the center property here is where the business has operated outdoor merchandise. This is also deemed nonconforming, but does not need to change. This has been an established right. And then to the south is the storage building. Where part of the store will be located or where the store will be located in a small portion of this building. Can I have the next slide, please? So this is an interior picture of the existing space. This is facing Narbonne Avenue. Once this property had a store, retail store in here, and you can see as the exterior is covered in stucco, if you can picture the building in your mind. But on the interior, it really is telling of what once was there. It's been framed up. And plastered over. Can we have the next slide, please? So the applicant is proposing to accommodate six striped parking spaces. One will be for employees exclusive use, and that will be inside. As it currently is inside the the storage building, there is a driveway apron already existing. The other five spaces will. Pretty much occupy the site. That is presently there. We don't have an existing site plan on file for this property. Because it predates the city's incorporation. So in essence, we're establishing tonight. The expectations for the property owner as to how they can operate the business. And create what is. Create the parking that they are expected to have for their business operations. The spaces are drive through, meaning they will, they can access either the southerly or northerly aisle and exit either of those aisles. As they presently operate today. Outdoor storage will still exist, as will the interior storage and the retail business to the north. And then the space in red is where you find the new retail store. Next slide, please. So as mentioned. This is interesting. We do have the use mentioned in our code, but there is no parking standard currently. We have legal nonconforming. Site that has informal parking. And the municipal code entrusts the planning commission, excuse me, entrusts the planning commission in situations like this. Where there is no parking standard to determine the appropriate standard. So the municipal code has a couple of uses that have two components. The first is a contractor's office or contractor's business, which has an office component, and it has a storage component. And the office component is. Parked at one ratio and the storage component is parked at another. Also, at brewery. Businesses have the same kind of two-part parking standard. And that standard for the brewery is for the manufacturing area is separate from the restaurant area. So most akin to this is a contractor's storage yard where, you know, large material is being stored. And that is parked at one space for every four hundred square feet. And then the retail sales, if you could go to the next slide. The retail sales is just straightforward retail sales. We have that parking standard in our municipal code, and that is one space for every three hundred square feet. As proposed, this project would have approximately sixty five hundred square feet of storage area. And that translates into sixteen spaces, a little bit more. And then it would have, as proposed, approximately twenty five hundred square feet of retail area. And that translates into a little more than eight spaces. So the total for this project comes to, if they were a brand new development, let's say, would be twenty five parking spaces. Now. As as it is, if this development again was to not convert the space and it was to be a brand new development we were looking at, they would have to have twenty four spaces. And that was discussed a little bit further in the staff report. So really, the net here is we're talking about. One. Code space. For an existing use that predates all these standards and has operated in this manner for many, many years. Can you hear the next slide? In the DTC zone, there is a, there is an allowance and consideration for uses that are. Historic in nature, developed a long time ago, that cannot satisfy the the code standards without doing harm or being detrimental to the business. This business functions as a feed and grain store, and it has. Utilizes its outdoor space for much more than parking. It's integral to its business operation, and it will be now providing. A dedicated six spaces. And it can suitably function on the lot. Next slide. Oh, so let me stay here. So. Next slide. Oh, so let me say here. So instead of just, the code allows a planning commission to reduce the parking requirement when a business in the DC zone is within five hundred feet of a municipal parking lot. This business, if you can see, is within five hundred feet of three municipal parking lots that can help with the ebbs and flows of the parking that they demand they generate. Next slide. So this is kind of one of those technical points that I mentioned before. Lomita Feed operates as on three separate legal lots. And the code has a requirement that when there is parking for one business, it must be on the same property. And while it is highly unlikely, there's going to be a separation of this property. There could be potentially a different retail user down the road if, and, and so in addition to being a practical matter to ensuring that the parking that's proposed tonight will be there and accessible for the new retail space and the existing retail space. It is a technical matter and so a condition has been added to tie these lots. And I just want to point out, what you can see on this parcel map is the property to the south, that's lot thirty-one and thirty-two, that little Z between, if you haven't ever seen this before, maybe you have that little Z on the property line that's shared, that is what a lot tile looks like in assessors' language. Next slide, please. As mentioned, one of our findings is that this project complies with Title eleven, the zoning chapter. And in that chapter, there's a requirement for the project to adhere to the downtown design guidelines. The applicant is modifying the northerly section and having a street-facing door and adding windows. And then they are also modifying the southern portion of the facade to have kind of a display to add window elements to the facade and retaining the existing barn doors that, or I should say large doors that provide access to the interior parking as well as access to storage area. Next slide, please. So staff, the following findings have been made. And the first is that with the Planning Commission's approval of the parking and not imposing a landscaping, new landscaping standard on a site that's already been developed. This project will comply with Title eleven of the municipal code. The second finding is that this site is suitable for the particular use and will not have adverse effects on public welfare. Will not impact negatively neighboring properties and is consistent with all elements of the general plan. You know, an existing feed and grain store has operated at this site for many, many years. The retail sale store is by compatible by right in the DC zone. The site is furnished with all utilities. It will have some off-site parking and an off-site trash area. And conditions of approval have been added to ensure that the parking spaces and the aisles are not impacted and remain accessible. Next slide, please. And the third and last finding is that the development design is suitable and functional. So the applicant has designed this project so that there is a street-facing door. Customers who park on site, you know, will be walking into the sidewalk, but customers who park off-site do not have to enter into the parking lot. The parking lot spaces are through spaces and have access via two driveways. The three existing, the three driveway aprons are already existing and staff finds this a suitable and functional design. Next slide, please. So last, this project is exempt from CEQA. It's an existing facility that is not proposing any new square footage. It is a minor alteration of a private structure and has limited interior alterations. Next slide. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approves site plan twelve, sixteen, subject to conditions and also recommends confirmation of the categorical exemption. Staff has not received written comments on this project. I'm here for questions from the applicants and architecture as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura, for that very, very well detailed proposal, presentation. So what I'd like to do is ask if any of the commissioners have any questions or comments, and I'll start off with Vice Chair Graff.
The only comment that I have is I think that the potential for the retail from the letter that was sent when, with the package is quite impressive. And I think that it will help to bring more people to downtown. And hopefully, when they do come to visit, go to the tax store and stuff like that, that they'll eat at some of the restaurants, too. I think that it's a good idea. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mike. Commissioner Dever, any comments, questions?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Santos, comments, questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Stevens, any comments, questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Thompson, any comments or questions?
No, very good report. Nice being concise from staff. Thank you.
Okay. And my only comment is that I believe that because this has been a existing and thriving business since the twenties, it's kind of an anchor. You know, tenant, if you would, of downtown Lomita. And I'm all for all the changes and I'm glad to see that the owner has survived COVID, which I'm pretty sure with all the horses up on the hill, he's had no problems. But I'm extremely impressed with the fact that he's going to try and lure some business from a another tax shop that apparently didn't survive, but is going out of business after about eighty years. And we can let the applicant speak to that. But I think we, we have a great opportunity to expand an existing business as Vice Chair Graff said, for additional sales. And who knows, maybe we'll have our own rodeo days one day and they can really be the centerpiece of our, our thriving, you know, revived downtown area. So with that being said, I will ask if the applicant is here, which I believe he is, Mr. Lockwood's on, if you'd like to speak on, on this issue then, sir.
Yes, I'd be happy to. I don't know if you guys can hear me. I will admit that this is my first Zoom ever, so if it's a little awkward, please excuse me. Thank you for considering this. We really appreciate it. And we thought that after a hundred years, it was probably time for Lomita Feed to expand. It turns out that it was simply coincidental that Broken Horn, who had existed for eighty years, chose to close their doors after we had already insta- or instigated, you know, doing a remodel and reopening the original storefront. Broken Horn, for people not in the, the equestrian world, was an absolute anchor in Southern California for both English and Western tack and fashion. And people from San Diego County to Ventura County, San Bernardino County, went there and my family included. And there leaving his, in my opinion, opened up a phenomenal opportunity. It's something that we had wanted to do anyway. The Western tack has been largely ignored in the South Bay area because for decades, the equestrian world here was English-centric. I would say now it is closer to fifty-fifty. And I wanted to provide those people with the opportunity to be able to get stuff, quality stuff, closer. And so that was, and still is, my original intent. Like I say, the Broken Horn shutting their doors was simply a coincidence and unfortunate because I think it's a shame anytime any multi-generational business that is so important to cities, counties, and certain endeavors goes away. And so I was sad to see that, but I'm, I'm very happy for our opportunity. Being able to reopen the original storefront that was founded here in nineteen twenty-seven. It, to me, is, it, I mean, it's just, it's fantastic. I would love nothing more than to have people walk in and see the original cash register that they used when the store was founded in Lomita in nineteen twenty-one, which we have and will display. And so just all those things being said, we, we, you know, we think it's a fantastic opportunity for us, for the equestrian world, for Lomita itself as well. Certainly, our goal is not simply to attract people to our store, but of course, that is a goal. But it is to attract it to the downtown area and to have people be able to go to Burning Daylight, go over to Benello's. You know, go down to Retro Reload. And, you know, really participate, you know, in the revitalization of the area. So I think I probably droned on for long enough, so thank you for your indulgence. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has them.
Well, thank you, Bill. And we will now open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any written communications on this item? No, is that what you're saying? No?
Sorry about that. Okay, so no. No, no written request to speak.
Okay. And then the next, of course, if there's anybody that's actually on the meeting, if they wanted to speak on the item, if you do, please either raise your hand or let us know, you could just raise your hand on the, on the Zoom feature or just on the screen. But we have a couple of people on, so if anybody wants to speak on this, if not, we'll move forward. And seeing none, okay, I will now close the public hearing. And if there's no more comments or questions or any other discussions, I guess I would ask for a motion and a second on this item number five to move forward.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for site plan review one, two, one, six to convert the hundred and sixteen square foot of existing sixty-eight hundred square foot warehouse into a retail space and to allow for reduction in the required parking by approving six onsite drive-through spaces at the business located within five hundred feet of municipal parking lots. And to adopt the findings set forth in the staff report, including but not limited to that the is that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA, that site plan, that's complies with all provisions of the actual title, Title eleven, that the site is suitable for particular use or development intended. And that the development design is suitable and functional.
I second that motion, Chairman.
Chair, apologies for the interruption, if I may. And Laura, you may have to correct me. Did, did you say at the beginning of your presentation that it was a slight modification? Was it still sixteen hundred square feet or was it a bit smaller?
Thank you. It is, the retail store is now one thousand one hundred and sixty square feet.
Perfect. So, so commissioners, I just want to be sure, it, it, that's the motion, correct?
That's what, I believe it's what I stated, yes.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you.
No, that's right. Let's be clear.
Okay, so we have a motion and I believe Commissioner Santos put a second on the table.
That is correct.
Okay, great. And just for the record, the item and the report from staff does indicate conversion of eleven hundred and sixty square feet and a reduction parking to six spots. So we're good there. Okay. So Madam Deputy City Clerk, will you please do a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach is absent. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Be my motion, yes.
Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
And Chair Camerata?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six, zero with one absent.
Okay, great. Last quick comment to our applicant, Mr. Lockwood. First of all, your first Zoom meeting was successful. You did a good job. We all heard you very well, so just want to let you know about that. And then secondly, congratulations and look forward to having you in the community for another who knows how long, hundred years plus.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
You, Mr. Lockwood.
Any other comments?
No, we're good.
Hello?
We are good.
That's the architect.
Yes, I just want to let you know I was here.
I, I saw you over there, Jim, but I figured since you didn't raise your hand, you were okay.
Well, yeah, but I guess it didn't go through. But yeah, thank you. And by the way, I'm an equestrian also, Western.
Well, that's good. I appreciate, I appreciate all of your hard work, so we can move forward.
Good.
We'll, we'll, we'll have staff reach out to Bill afterwards and they'll go through the formalities.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, so we're down to scheduled matters. Item number six now is communication regarding city council actions. We've got two items on here. Sherri, do you want to read these or do you want me to read these?
Either way, your preference.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read them very quickly. So first item is March fifteenth, the council took on an issue and reviewed and approved a capital improvement program, which is about which is done in about every five years, which establishes capital improvement project priorities. And there is a hearing coming up for the the, the plan, and it's going to be on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two at four o'clock. I'm assuming that's in chambers.
Yes.
Okay. And then subsequent to that, April fifth, the council adopted an urgency ordinance eight thirty for you for the extension of the urgency ordinance number eight thirty-two U for a period of ten months and fifteen days to implement State of California Senate Bill nine to allow urban lot splits and two-unit residential developments in a single-family residential zone. If you want to make any further comments on that, Sherri.
I would just like to comment that on, in your May meeting, we plan on having a substantive workshop to talk about ADUs SB nine and enhanced residential development in the A one and R one zone. So we'll try to figure out all of these, both complementary and competing requirements and see if we can make some sense of it. We scratch our head all the time trying to make sure we get it straight.
Okay. If I may, I, I may hold my comment on this until we get to Commissioner items, unless I can speak on it now.
Is it regarding SB nine?
Yes, it is. I'm just wondering, how does the city gauge itself against the recent backdrop of, I think, three local cities that have now sued the state over SB nine? Is that something we want to talk about tonight or wait till our main meeting?
I think that actually might be more appropriate for the next workshop because we can talk about those, those challenges.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay. So then with that being said, let's move on to item seven, which is project status update. And now back to you, Sherri.
Right. I think the one thing we wanted to discuss was the water project. And I think, Laura, you were going to comment on that.
Thank you. So Director Dylan got back to us and I'm going to read kind of what she wrote. It's about the water production upgrade project is ongoing with completion expected later this year. And this I found very interesting. The city is currently supplied a hundred percent by Metropolitan Water District through West Basin Water District. And she put parentheses, two connections, which includes emergency and storage supply. In addition, the city has two emergency water connections with the city of Torrance. with the city of Torrance and one with LA Department of Water and Power. The city is fortunate to have a level of redundancy, three sources through five different connections, and that most other water purveyors do not have this. When the Cypress Water Project upgrade is complete, the well, water treatment system and reservoir will be put back into service. The reservoir will provide storage beyond what is required and allow the city to reduce its reliance on imported water. So I hope that answers everyone's questions and we'll let you know as it gets closer to completion.
Thank you, Laura. I'm going to ask if there's a possibility that somebody can put that in writing and put that into our next packet for May, just to have a status report in writing. Shouldn't take that long, just to maybe paraphrase or email or do something like that.
It'll be in the minutes, won't it, Linda?
Yes, it will. I, I'm not sure if Steve's referring to, to this particular thing that we could, we could email or if he's referring to a list of projects. I'm not.
No, 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 no. Just, just what Laura had mentioned, a summary. So it'll be in the minutes. That's fine.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, what we can do as well is the, the director had actually emailed that language to us. So we can simply forward that email to all of the commissioners.
And that's what I thought it might be, just to, you know, put that email in there. Okay, perfect. Okay, okay. So moving on, item eight, staff announcements. Looks like we've got a couple of items on here as well. California Alliance of State Elected, California State Auditor releases a scathing report on RHNA, which is the regional housing report, finding that the goals are not supported by evidence. I think this might tie into what we may be talking about at May as well.
Well, it's actually a little bit different because we're not going to be talking necessarily about all of the housing element. But I did want to bring this to the commission's attention. Because I mean, you'll remember when we were going through the meetings and the hearings, we were all concerned with the huge numbers that were being used in the arena. And looks like maybe we were right with our arguments. I'm not sure if it means much right now because we already have a housing element that's been adopted. We're in the process of trying to get it certified by the state. But it does suggest that maybe the numbers were overinflated. So hopefully in the next round, those numbers will come down and we won't have a huge obligation. So I just wanted you to read this, just so you would see in the background that there is still ongoing discussion and dispute about the Rena numbers. I did also want to briefly mention too that our housing element is currently being reviewed by the state. I'm going to have a meeting with them probably next week or the following week because we did receive a letter. There are certain things they don't like about our housing elements. We're going to try to resolve that to the best that we can. But one of the main things that's come up that I just want the commission to be aware of is that when we were going through the process of doing the housing element, there was some confusion about when the certified document would occur versus just having an adopted housing element that would be compliant with the typical housing element laws. So we were always working under the assumption that if we adopted and transmitted to HCD prior to February eleventh, that we would be in substantially good compliance. Well, there was a law that was passed, which was AB thirteen ninety eight. And it became effective on January one, two thousand twenty two. And it has some language in it that's created a real concern because it says that cities and counties have to have an on-time adopted and compliant six cycle housing element. That kind of suggests that it needs to be certified by February eleventh. Well, in the whole SCAG region, there's only six cities that actually accomplish that. So the majority of us are, again, kind of scratching our heads, wondering what does this really mean? SCAG has tried to have some discussions with HCD. It's not going anywhere. Basically, we've been told as municipalities and as counties that maybe we should seek legislative relief because it's obviously some confusion between the various requirements. But what it means to us is that in the housing element, we had a program that said we would rezone properties within three years in order to meet our Rena numbers. If we, if we're not compliant, meaning we didn't have a certified element by February eleventh, it now suggests that we have one year from the original due date to rezone all those properties, which would be October fifteenth of this year. I don't really see that happening. So just stay tuned. We'll put something on your agenda when there's really more to report. But I just wanted to put that out there so that you weren't surprised if you were reading anything.
Okay, thank you, Sheri. And I think, again, maybe the bigger picture is still that some way ties back to SB nine and ten. I think there's a lot of correlation between them, but we'll wait for another day to discuss all that. Okay.
Sure.
Item number nine, planning commission items. I will start with Vice Chair Graff.
Yes, excuse me. Thank you for the update on the water facility and the information with regarding to the emergency scenarios that, that are available. If you, I know Sheri, you don't recall, but that was, maybe you do. That was some, that was the update we were supposed to have gotten ASAP after last November. And we finally got it. And thank you for going forward, you and Laura, going forward to get it from Carla. Appreciate it. The other item that I have is, I know the city's been doing a lot of graffiti or graffiti cleanup, whether it's the city or the owners of the property or whatever. I just wanted to bring up one item that was reported and on graffiti and nothing's been done with it. And that's at Lamita Park, we have those beautiful gazebos that people are always filling up. And there's graffiti on all the, not all, but on the columns, those white columns that support the roofs of those those structures. And I was just wondering if maybe it could be reported that they should take a look at that, too, please. That's all I have.
Please unmute yourself if you like to speak. There was some background noise, so I muted everyone.
Mr. Chair, you're muted.
Okay, how about that?
That's better.
All righty. So let's see. Commissioner Dever, anything? Monica?
No, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Muted, didn't know it. Commissioner Santos?
No, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Stevens, anything?
Yeah, I, I just had to, last month, Ms. Gardner came, and I was just wondering if there was any resolution to that issue. Because there are several other properties that could be impacting. And I didn't know if the city had reached out to them and made any resolution to that. You're muted.
I'm doing the same thing.
Thank, thank you, Brenda. And for those of you that don't recall, Brenda's referring to an item that was in last month's meeting, meeting minutes regarding a storage container that was in her front yard, if I remember correctly.
I believe it was the backyard, but
Okay.
That's okay.
Correct. Yeah, we have had several discussions in-house and we'll be getting back with Ms. Gardner in terms of options, but it looks like the options are relatively limited.
Okay.
Yeah, because generally the city permits structures that are on permanent foundations, but just having a cargo container in and of itself is not permitted.
Okay, I was just wondering if there was any resolution to that. And my other question is more, it's more of a comment, but Lamita Boulevard in Narbonne is looking really sad. I was just wondering if they're ever going to replace the windows on the corner and the buildings along, the businesses along Narbonne from Lamita Boulevard going towards PCH. Some of those properties are looking really, really ghetto. And I don't know if the owners can be, you know, held to maintain the street appearance, but it's looking really shabby in some places.
You know, it's, it's a very good point. I know that one of the properties had a cargo through the window, so they're probably working on the insurance issues. Others may need to be incentivized in order to kind of pick up the pace and do a better job. We do have a grant that is available. It's a facade improvement grant. So we are trying to advertise that. So hopefully some of those property owners will take advantage of it. But if any of you know of businesses that may qualify that are involved with service-related businesses, there are some specific standards in terms of who will qualify. And I don't know, we can, that information is available on the city's website. But certainly help people call Laura if they have any questions regarding the facade program.
On that note, the facade improvement forgivable loan application period, it closes on April twenty first. So it, there are businesses, it's a little bit limited on this, you know, initial go around it, and there may or may not be another, but it's retail and food and service businesses. So I have actually personally dropped off applications at several, oh, and nonprofits. Nonprofits are also eligible. So I've dropped off applications at several, you know, the application process, we are dealing with being entrusted with public funds. And so it's, it's a little cumbersome, but we timed it, you know, specifically so it would hit after April fifteenth. So it is again due on April twenty first. And the information, as Sheri said, is on the web and I'm available to, you know, help qualifying businesses complete their application.
It's just, you know, we're doing all this stuff to beautify downtown and draw people in. And then you have these eyesores, I mean, the, the Thai place or the quiet tendu or whatever it is on the corner, that was like six months ago. They've had those boards up there for six months. That's ridiculous. So just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. And I believe not to forget anybody, Commissioner Thompson, anything?
I'm just real quick, just want to thank the staff so much for the presentations tonight and for all the hard work they do. I don't think they get enough kudos. Getting us well-prepared for this, for the meeting. So we're very efficient. I was bragging to somebody about our city and how much money the commissioners all make and how much money our mayor and our city council makes and how bare bones our staff is and how hard they work. And what a great city we have. I'm just, just really proud to be, be a part of this commission and to work with these wonderful staff. I can't say thanks enough, but that's it.
Thank, thank you, Jim. I just have two quick items. I want to echo what Brenda said about the karate shop on the corner. That has been at least six months. I don't really know how insurance could take that long personally. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. Maybe somebody from the city can just make a quick call or pay a visit to the owner and find out why it's taken so long. It does seem like, and that's a huge corner right there. And then if you couple the southeast corner with the flower shop, then the dress shop used to be, it's empty and I know they're working on it. Do we have any idea what's going on in there yet? Any, any new business coming in?
Yes, we, it is a, it is a, I don't know if it's completely consignment, woman's clothing store. And she has an Instagram presence as well as, it's a local resident. She also does like clothing for TV and other kind of film costumes. And she is one of the, actually, she's an applicant. We, I spoke with her today about her facade and new signage and how the city's program might be able to benefit that new business that's going in. You know, her, I guess would say, initial business was definitely impacted by COVID because filming all took a hit. And she's looking forward to opening up this shop. It's called Well-Worn Art.
Okay, well, that's good news. Hopefully she'll open a door soon. And then keeping with, I believe, maybe Mike's theme on the graffiti, I do want to thank Linda, if I may, at this point for moving the ball up the road to get graffiti removed at three spots that were in the city. One was on the medical building on two fifty and Narbonne. The other one was on the short half wall at the bus stop at Narbonne and PCH by the empty bank building. And then the last one was on the fencing for Mr. Shereen's project on Narbonne. So all of that's been removed. So thank you. And with that, I have nothing else to say. So we can move to item number ten, Commissioner, to attend upcoming city council meetings. We've got two of them, May third and May seventeenth. So if anybody wants to volunteer to attend those, I believe they're still on Zoom, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
They are both.
Both the hybrid, okay. So anybody? Well, I have to twist somebody's arm to go?
I'll take the May seventeenth, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jim. May third, Tuesday, May third. Going once, Mike, you in?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Okay. Joaquin, are you able to do it hybrid? Maybe Zoom? Joaquin? You got to unmute yourself.
I think we might have lost. There he is, there he is.
Yeah. Oh, thank you, sir. Okay. Okay, now, the next item, speaking of meetings, is a discussion of hybrid meetings, which I believe Sheri is going to do presentation. I'm not sure who's got, get this one there.
This, this is really an opportunity for the planning commission to decide how you'd like to go forward. The city council has started doing hybrid meetings. So they are, four of the five are in the council chambers and then one is still hybrid. So if the planning commission would like to come back to City Hall, we just simply need to know what your preference is because we need to arrange for staff to be able to do the filming because that's something that would be new for the hybrid meetings. So it's, it's really your choice at this point.
Do we all need to decide tonight or can we let you know at the next meeting? Everybody can think about it and then make a decision at the next meeting, I think?
That would be fine. We'll put it back on the agenda.
Okay, because I think I think that gives every time a good month to check it out. So, okay, well, with that, then nothing else I would call for adjournment. The next, just to note, the next meeting of the planning commission is scheduled for Monday, May ninth, twenty twenty two at six PM. So with that, I would say motion to adjourn.
Move, so move.
Hey, Jim, motion and Mike, second. And with that, meeting is adjourned. So thank you for everybody's participation. Enjoy the rest of your week. We'll see you guys in a month. And have a good evening. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thanks.